This going, so go ahead.
Oh, this is not working.
PA is there?
Oh, is it unplugged here?
My life.
You can go home. I'm not, it's not working yet.
All right. Good evening and welcome to the Village Workshop, April 13th. On this fine, beautiful evening. I want to ask Al to lead us in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Carl?
Please, Peter, please.
All right, so I'd like to open up the public comments section. Step up to the podium, state your name and address. Stay within our five minutes. Okay, since we've been on this evening, we will move on. We'll close the public's comments section. And we are going to move over to our village treasurer for budget presentation.
Thank you. Um, okay. Short and sweet today. Okay, I love having about the general and sewer funds. First, I'm going to talk a little about the budget process and then get into a few numbers with the general and sewer funds. Okay, the budget process is a months-long occurrence. Even in December, I give a heads-up to department heads that I need some numbers from them. Start making your estimates and come up with some figures for me. And then we have meetings and discussions and talk about what kind of capital projects we want to do, what sorts of just general improvements we're looking at, what might have been postponed in a prior year that we want to ink, push up the priority list. Okay, plowing ahead with workshops, continuing discussions. Then April 15th is our deadline to have this public hearing that is about to happen. So this is our last shot to get that in. And then the board, the board needs to adopt the budget by May 1st. Okay, what goes into building a solid budget? A lot of stuff. Some things, I'll just take the numbers and now based on inflation or historical data, I will modify them, usually increase lines accordingly. Department heads could give me a lot of the information that I need there. Some things are known, like lease payments, debt service, things like that are already established and inflexible. And we have projects coming up that we've negotiated in the preliminary talks. State and federal funding, grants and things like that come into play. Trends like inflation and the tax cap and the constitutional tax limit also need to be considered. The difference between those, the tax cap caps, the increase in taxes that we're allowed to impose year over year, while the constitutional tax limit is like a numerical cap on the tax limit that we can impose in any given year. Any questions so far? All right. Okay, the general fund. We're looking at a tax rate this year of 2.268 per thousand. So our property taxes are coming in at a little over 576,000. Sales tax is as usual, our biggest piece of the revenue pie. And then we have state and federal aid. Other revenues include building permits, passport processing fees, grocery receipts tax, things like that. Here we are in pie form. Same numbers, different format. All right, okay, appropriations for the general fund. The biggest chunk is transportation. We've got to make sure that the roads are drivable, sidewalks are functional. Nobody's going to fall and break a hip or anything like that. Let's see. Home and community services is another sizable chunk. That's 10%. Let's see, 19. Employee benefits, health insurance, things like that are in there. All right, current and future projects. We're going to be replacing the roof above our heads. Various roads get maintained to a certain degree every year. Jake's got a years-long rolling plan to make sure that every, every road is maintained appropriately. We also have a plan for vehicle and equipment replacement. We've replaced several trucks this year. And then the ongoing thing, the sandbar wells decommissioning project is something that we have gone in with the town to get a grant for a large portion of that funding, but that still needs to be considered. Okay, on to the sewer fund. Our rate per unit is going to 225 this year for estimated sewer revenues of just short of 1.4 million. And that is the huge majority of our sewer revenues. Here's a comparison with last year, or the year that we're about to wrap up. This $30 a year increase per unit comes out to about $2.50 a month. I'd pay 2.50 a month to be able to flush. All right. Our budgeted, oops, let me go back there. Our budgeted appropriations are pretty, well, they went up about 100,000. A lot of that is debt service. We're going to be putting funds into reserves so that we can pay down the bond that we're using to do our sewer, our sewer improvement project. Okay, revenues in pie chart form. And appropriations. Home and community service is pretty much, you know, making sure the sewers work. Everything else is making sure the sewer department works. Okay, I just put this in here because it's fun. That's our new backer truck.
It's a beauty.
Our flush truck, yes, it is.
Yeah, she drives it.
This concludes our very brief presentation. Happy to answer questions? Anyone?
So is this budget within the tax cap?
Yeah, there's a question.
It's a good thing that the public should know.
Yeah. Thank you, Don.
Did he use effective July 1st?
June 1st.
June 1st.
That was the police budget presentation, Marsha.
So how, I'm just looking at the general revenue stating ready grant. You've got nothing there, but isn't something needed?
Not for the current year. The ready grant is in the spur of the moment.
Oh, I only mention it because one of the projects here, you've got well decommissioned. So this year's budget, the revenue of last year?
Well, that was, that slide was current and proposed.
Okay. You confused me with that one. So there's no, yeah.
Can I leave the slide up? It's a little big for our...
No, I do not have any questions.
All right.
Thank you. Marsha and department heads.
Yes, thanks to everyone for their help with the budget this year. Went very smoothly, I think.
Appreciate it. So we're going to, since it is not 7:20 yet, I'm willing to move on to some village business. I'll be looking for a resolution to approve the claims and warrants. Please, Carl and Al, other bills.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
No questions?
I got one.
Oh, let's, if you don't want, like the answer.
Yeah, well, just a minute. It's for Jake. It's my favorite candidate.
It's not a, not simple.
No, this is a little bit better than not simple. Don't you guys have toolboxes, Jake? With ratchets and wrenches and tape measures and screwdrivers?
Yes, actually, the tape measure is for me because I didn't have one. Yes, yes, they do. I mean, there's a toolbox in the shop. We have stuff that sometimes things will wear out and there'll be additional replacements.
Thank you, Jake.
Absolutely.
That's my only question.
All right, so you...
And that's final.
So you're still making your motion?
I'm still making the motion.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Balkey?
Aye.
Trustee Alino?
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right, so we're going to be looking for a resolution to adopt a secret on the proposed local law number two of 2023 entitled "The Addition of a Stop Intersection Upon Lincolnshire Road and the Addition of Yield Intersections Upon Kittleberger Park, Seasons Trail, and Blue Vista Trail", connecting amendments to chapter one and five, six. Are there any to read this?
No.
You guys, we've discussed this and talked about this, I would assume. If anyone has any questions.
I'll make the resolution to adopt that.
I'll second it.
Trustee Balkey?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Alino?
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right, which for that time, yes, we do. So now I'll be looking for a resolution to adopt the proposed local law number two of 2023 entitled, wait, did I just read that?
Have you read about the stop?
It's the same, it's related, the same thing.
All right. Entitled "The Addition of Stop Intersection Upon Lincolnshire Road and Addition of Yield Intersections Upon Kittleberger Park, Seasons Trail, Blue Vista Trail", connecting amendments to chapter one and five, six.
Yeah, it's different sentence. I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Balkey?
Aye.
Trustee Alino?
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right, so now I'll be looking for another resolution, guys, to authorize the village treasurer to make a final payment to the Frywell Drilling in the amount of $10,925.50 for Frywell Drilling, Inc. Has completed for the well decommissioning project through March 16th of '23. Represents the release of retainage and has been withheld under pay requisition number one, pending the completion of all the remaining work.
I'll make the resolution.
I'll second it.
Trustee Balkey?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Alino?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Don?
What?
Do you have anything for us tonight?
What?
Your hour and a half point?
There's only three things on it.
No, other than Tuesday, the town zoning board of appeals did approve the conditions of extension of the sewage treatment plants on existing non-conforming use. Those conditions being that you got to replace the entire perimeter fence, including getting rid of the bird wire in the top and putting in privacy slats, and replacing all of the glass in the greenhouse, and re-roofing and re-siding the barn by the creek. So hopefully, and that's all a condition, it's going to be a condition of the building permit for the new chemical storage building. Meaning, if those things aren't done by the time the chemical storage building is completed, you won't get a certificate of completion from the town. And it can then cause havoc for the entire project.
So we got to get some proposals, because that's a lot of work.
And then, I don't know where, and then you got to find the money to do all this stuff.
Yeah, well, they're splitting with us?
Who's going to split it with the town? Why should the town?
They're asking for all this.
You know, the town's not going to split it.
Do we really need to do everything that we asked, Dan? I mean, is that...
Yeah, absolutely. With stuff that we agreed we were going to do. And frankly, we put off, and I explained it the other night, we put off the, a lot of the repairs because we're waiting to decide what we're going to do. We didn't want to invest if the sewer department's going to wait. We didn't want to fix a building just to knock it down later. So, but now that we know, we have, you know...
Do we ever have any numbers or doing any of this stuff yet, or no?
Yeah, we have appeal already for the fence. We have, I've been contacting the gentleman. I actually talked him again today. We're meeting out there Tuesday for the barn. And John's already got some of the glasses that order more glass. They'll go through and...
So we get to do that one in-house?
Yeah, with the greenhouse, we're going to do in-house. We just have to get the lifts. We have to wait for it to be a little drier so we don't tear up right along the creek there. And, yeah, the fence, we're doing a portion of that work. We're going to do the removal coordinated with the fence company.
It's going to be not be terrible.
Well, the fence itself is like 60 grand, plus another 20 grand for slats, I think it is. And then our labor for doing that stuff. The barn, we don't have numbers on yet. And the glass, we've got to finalize what that's going to be based on what additional pieces we're going to do. But yeah, it's all, you know, like I said, things that we wanted to do, we're going to do anyway.
Do we have an estimated time of when this would all get be done?
By the time the chemical storage building is...
Which, they don't have an estimated time there?
No, because we just got the approvals.
Okay, so could the years?
I'm asking you.
No.
Do it in a year for this? Well, when do you think you're going to get this whole $10 million upgrade project done?
Next year, by next year.
So that's, that's when the chemical storage building should be done. Because it's all part of that whole project.
How are your goals to have all these things done this year?
So we may have to do some budget changes later on to accommodate some of these, make some decisions later on. All right. Thanks, Don. Is there anything else this evening?
No. And Matt Higgins and I had to endure over three hours of public comments in front of the town zoning board of appeals. And the jury of the comments were directed to the green, the aesthetic, aesthetic improvements in the village's wastewater treatment plant. But in the neighbors' view, some things were getting unsightly. So, Al, I don't know when the last time was. You went to the back there and looked at that barn.
Yeah.
And you probably wouldn't want to live next to it.
Okay, that's okay.
So it's high time these things get done.
So we're looking back, we're just moving forward and we'll get it done?
So the, the plan was to just get all this stuff done now. So hopefully, the neighbors will be appeased.
All right, well, Jake, we're going to skip you because we are going to open up the public hearing section. Public hearing on the tentative budget for '23, '24 fiscal year, which was just presented. Feel free.
Do you want to vote to open it?
Oh, I should vote to open up the public hearing. I was just going to do that before Heather interrupted me. I will ask for a motion.
So sorry, sir.
Open up the public hearing. Nobody wants to open it?
Let's open it. I'll second it.
Oh, yeah, the comments are on, or what? Okay, trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Balkey?
Aye.
Trustee Alino?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Aye.
Yeah, feel free to come up if you have any questions. What was that? You want to see the truck one more time? Marsha, can you put the truck?
I want to see the truck.
All right, since we do not have any questions or comments, we will close the public hearing. Want me to vote for that too?
I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
Thank you, guys.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Balkey?
Aye.
Trustee Alino?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Now we'll return to normal scheduled business. Mr. Schwely.
Can I bump you? I think so.
In the roof, the...
Oh, no, they're going to scan.
Put the ladder on when I get them up.
Yeah, they're doing a thermal scan of the roof.
All right, so Jake, we're going to allow Heather go quick. If you don't mind.
Thank you. In your folder, I put a couple things that we're going to clarify each and off now that the...
No, go ahead.
So now that the public hearing is closed, we can officially make any changes to the budget. And I am, we won't, won't vote on it until the next meeting. But I would like to make a change to the salary for the DPW superintendent. And as per your request, I emailed all that information out for, yeah, for the DPW superintendent as well as the trustees and the mayor. So I would like to, I don't, I'm going to ask Don for clarification again, but do we actually need to take a vote? Or can I just get approval to change it to the budget for next? Should we just take a resolution just to make it clean? Each one of those?
An approval is a vote.
I know, but it doesn't count. I'm just saying usually I need some kind of verbal thing to change it.
You should go, you should go line by line through all these proposed budgets, not...
Okay.
And take a vote on each one of them.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
You don't want me to do any ones?
Uh, you can. Let me make it.
All right. So proposed modifications to the tentative budget are as follows. Revenues, adjust based on 22 rolls summary. Well, this is a good one. $4,501. And change from $3,460 to $3,433, $27. Expenditures, increase trustee pay, $1,046. Increase mayor pay, $4,018.
Oh, sorry, Deputy Mayor. This, that's just the general, so you'll have to include the GG in the sewer in that because it's 9 to 10. So really, you can still read it like that, but just keep in mind it's $1,046 in...
Yep, I'll just keep going down and then I'll read it when we get done.
Perfect. Thank you. Yep.
Small adjustment to office debt pay, $79. Small adjustment to billing inspector pay, $19. Increase to DPW superintendent pay, $1,997. Most of the work will be done in CY.
Current year.
Perfect, thank you. $3,000 increased due to monthly cost of fiber, $7,400. Small increase for miscellous office supplies, $200. Estimate for internal wearings is reduced, $6,000. Scheduled Williamson training will be free. So $600 come back and adjust contingency to the balanced budget in favor of $9,857. Then continue on expenditures for sewer. Increase trustee pay, $465. Increase mayor pay, $117. Small adjustment to office debt pay, $9. Increase to DPW superintendent pay, $665. Adjust contingency to the balanced budget in favor of $1,0256. So those are the proposed modifications. Questions?
I'm, I just want to put, are the expenditures, the mayor pay and trustee pay reversed in the top part?
I was wondering the same thing. I asked. Seems odd, right?
No, you're right. Yep, they're reversed. My apologies.
Sorry, Mayor.
That's what I was asking you there, not in the beginning, was.
Oh.
It should be...
Sorry.
Should be the $4,018 is all the trustees combined in just $1,046 for mayor, which makes no sense.
Yes, sorry about that. Now I give justice.
Thanks, Jake.
Yeah, Jake, but they're, they're all right in the sewer. The sewer looks correct.
The mayor's getting a little less money.
No, because I didn't make it, so...
Yeah.
Some other questions?
Just, I need to vote, but just to clarify, just so this isn't confusing for, for the DPW superintendent. We already put the proposed in there for six, so this is to, to make it to the nine. Same numbers that you received in, in the email, but I just wanted to clarify that.
Correct.
Same thing.
So I will ask for motion to approve these proposed modifications.
I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
Trustee Alino, thank you.
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Okay. Now I'd like to move to Jake.
The, I submitted a, sorry, request for surplus declaration for two trucks and some other equipment that we had. We, we received a replacement truck, W1, which is our pickup truck with the plow on it. W2, we got Monday. This is one of the platform trucks, and this is part of the scheduled vehicle replacement. We also have a angle brim for the trackless and a large chute for the trackless that, they went on the old unit that we no longer use. A few tires and a wing card. There's an option coming up in the... Um, there's an option coming up in May and we want to be able to put those in. Um, the list of equipment, I think everybody got the sheet.
Yep.
So I'd just like to request a surplus declaration for those. Um, and then I'll add just a few reminders, we're doing spray cleanup this year, the information's on the website. Uh, we're doing the grass and lawn debris pickup the week before a normal fresh pickup. Um, so we're gonna go out and, you know, this is like the third or fourth year I think we're doing it. It's become pretty popular. Put the leaf machine back on, people around, you know, stragglers and people didn't make it out or things that blew up along the fence line, so. Um, that information's out there, just remind everybody to keep their, the piles separate. We'll be out the one week and get all the leaves and then go through with the, you know, take, put the chipper on and get those. Um, you know, we're, excuse me, Currier Park, I think I mentioned last time, the here to place pipeline portion of that community development block grant project is done. Um, we're gonna start, um, doing the sidewalks, um, probably the week of the twenty-fourth is what the schedule is, weather dependent. Um, I prepared some letters, well, for updates today. Unfortunately, we're gonna have to take the trees down on the east side of Currier Park. There's not a lot of, uh, room in the tree lawn area for those trees if we make the sidewalk wider. Um, we could seek, the, the front setbacks are pretty shallow there, about twenty, twenty-five feet, so we could try to seek easements and move the sidewalk over, but if you have one person in the middle or doesn't grant one, um, we'd have an issue. So what we thought is we'll move the sidewalks over and then seek tree easements like we did on West Main Street. So we can place a village tree behind the sidewalk and it wouldn't tear up the new sidewalk and place it plenty far enough away but still get that tree lined street back. We can put smaller ornamental ones in the tree lawn area, but have a larger tree in back behind the sidewalks. And maybe not right in front of a house, you know, off on their side yard a little bit, so. Um, and those letters are gonna go out, we're gonna be, just deliver those tomorrow and get everybody out there.
So you want this, uh, you need a motion for this time, is that your answer?
Yes, please.
So I'll ask for a motion for the surplus assets that Mr. Schwely has talked about.
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Lowers?
Aye.
Trustee Valkey?
Aye.
Trustee Toledo?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Um, our next village board meeting will be April...
I'm sorry, Jake, could you, could you take a few minutes to talk about the CSEA equity adjustment that you're proposing?
Yes, I'm sorry. Um, I think we sent, sent out a, as approached by the union, uh, regarding, uh, a memorandum, memorandum of understanding sent out for the, uh, union employees. We, um, sorry, got a, in twenty, two thousand and nine, there was an adjustment made to the pay scales. And they kind of reestablished, um, for someone starting after June first, two thousand and nine, started a new pay scale. Something happened is that pay scale grew as they changed, but they were impacted by the cost of the increases every year. Um, we've got to a point now where there is a pretty big inequity. If somebody's here, uh, started in two thousand and ten and somebody else started in two thousand and eight. Um, you know, when you first start, two years of experience is a pretty good difference in experience. Um, but when you, you know, now if somebody started in two thousand and ten, they'd be here thirteen years, and the person in eight would be here fifteen years. It's the same two years, but that experience level, um, the difference in experience is, is reduced dramatically after you've gone through, you know, fifteen seasons or so. Um, the pay scale is, yeah, there is where if we had, for instance, a senior motor equipment operator, uh, there would be a ten dollar an hour difference, um, between the person on the, before two thousand and nine scale and after two thousand and nine scale. Um, which is obviously pretty significant. Um, and we're a small shop, there's seven people in the, in the highway. Um, effectively, everybody does, you know, most, you know, do the same job, obviously. Um, there's different, there's some different titles and different sets of responsibilities. But day to day, they're very often out doing the same thing. I think it's a little inequitable to be working, you know, side by side with somebody that's getting, you know, fifty percent more, um, than you're getting, uh, for doing the exact same thing. So we're looking, we, I've, I've talked to John, um, he's our, you know, chief line operator, he's also the union president. He submitted a request and we worked on it together a little bit to try to come up with something to present. Um, and that's included in this memorandum of understanding. What it basically does is take the, before two thousand and nine scale makes it the scale. And then we would have, from the after two thousand and nine scale, either lower scale, change that from a step to a year, you know, so we have one and two. I think in this proposal it has just one and two. Um, and we could, I wouldn't be opposed really, as we thought about more getting a step, or a third year, three to it, which is just taking off the same chart. So if somebody starts new, we just change it to a new year. So if somebody starts new, they would be on that after two thousand and nine scale for the first two or three years. And then they would step up to that other scale and start, you know, what's, what's an appropriate step in that scale. Um, obviously, it wouldn't change the village's discretion to place anybody. If you, you know, hire somebody that's got, you know, twenty-five years of experience, the village, the initial placement on that scale could be at the discretion of the village as it is now in the contract, and that wouldn't change. But for most, you know, someone's hired, you know, brand new hire, uh, put them in that scale and still have some incentive to stay because you're gonna get it, at the time, there'd be a one-time jump, um, between the old, or the new hire scale and the, and the scale of, I think it's about three dollars an hour when you went for that, that one jump. It's in, it's in the back, yeah, there. It'd be about three, especially if we added that third line to it, uh, about three dollars an hour. Of course, it's, it's fluid, it changes, uh, with the cost of the livings. Um, yes, it's got the twenty-four, twenty-five rate. So that's what we're looking to do, is just make it more equitable and try to straighten things out. There's three employees right now that would be impacted by it. And there's proposal within this MOU to place them in the new scale in an appropriate step. Um, and it's a significant increase, one-time increase for those three. Um, they're the ones, you know, that kind of situation we're trying to fix and avoid in the future is where there's that big inequity in, in pay, so. If there's not any other, are there any questions or anything? I'd be happy to answer.
So, did, did, did you go through, did you go through and do the math so that the percentage increases in these match up with what's in the union contract?
The, the wage rates here are what's in the contract, it's, I think it's a two-point-four percent.
This new one, like from this year one to year two, and then it jumps to, to the hire after June one, step one? Or no, then it goes to the hire prior to?
Yes.
So basically the hire after June one, two thousand and nine is going away?
Yes.
And then, and instead you're replacing it with this year one and year two of new hires?
Mm-hmm.
And then in year three, they jump to step one of the hire prior to June one?
That's the way it is now.
So how many more years do we have on the current contract?
I believe this one goes till twenty-twenty-six? And one of the things to...
So, again, I, you know, so the math from, like, just take motor equipment operator, year one, twenty dollars and four cents to twenty dollars and sixty-three cents, second. Does that, I don't know what percentage that is, but does that match up to? And I don't, off the top of my head, remember what the yearly increases were in the contract.
Well, there's, there're two-point-four percent in the contract.
And then it should be... Then you're jumping from twenty dollars and sixty-three cents to twenty-three dollars and ninety-eight cents. I don't know what percentage that is, but does that match the contract?
Not, the step increases were three percent apart when this was established. And then there's a cost of living increase when the whole chart, the way the contract agreed, the whole chart is adjusted by the cost of living increase. The degree of bond over there was two-point-four percent. So you'll see this one has got the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four on page, you know, it says a, I don't know what page it is, appendix one, page four or five. And then you've got five of five. So that page, this first chart in here, if you look at the difference between, you know, motor equipment operators, step one in twenty-three, twenty-four, and the next one, that should be two-point-four percent difference. And then each step was, uh, three percent difference when it was, when the, uh, scale was established. And they didn't discuss the percentage increase for step to step, that was the discussion in the agreement. Just had, hey, here's the charts, here's what it is. But that's, you know, three percent increase per step was what was established, I guess, longer than I've been here. That was, you know, they set up a step chart and that's three percent each one, and then the whole chart itself is adjusted annually by whatever the cost of living increase is. Since it was a fixed amount, we were able to lay it out for the next, for the entire length of the contract. Uh, in the past contracts, it's been done based upon CPIW where there's an adjustment every year, so you don't, you can't do the charts ahead of time.
As long as it, and again, I, I, as long as it matches up to what's in the contract that you're, you're representing to this board that it does.
I took these out in the existing contract, this wasn't, these weren't, you know, this is nothing other than taking the last page, you know, in the appendix.
Isn't this new hires after June one, twenty-twenty-three, brand new? That's not in the contract, is it?
I, I just changed, it's, instead of where it says hired after June first, twenty-twenty, or two thousand and nine, I just changed that line to say new hires after June first, twenty-twenty-three, and eliminated the, the bottom seven rows or, or sixty-six rows. Um, 'cause this is the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five. You'll see this appendix, you know, page five of five is the twenty-four, twenty-five rate. Really what this one ought to be, and I, I think we've left it full, this one ought to have these other, you know, because this is what we're coming up on the twenty-twenty-three, and cross off the bottom, you know, from step four to step eight. Um, I would advocate honestly to add, to keep the step one, two, and three and change those to year one, two, and three. Because then we get that longevity, when you're here for two years, you know, if you move around, you're not as invested. If you, you keep somebody for three because they're gonna get a three dollar an hour raise in year four, then I think they're, they've got more buy-in here and, and they're more part of the organization and they, and there's more of an incentive to stay. Um, it's getting very difficult to find people, because, you know, they're making it harder to get to, to find people with the CDL, so the federal government, the state government, it made it harder to get a CL.
You don't have a lot, we don't have a lot, or currently have a lot, internal...
Um, we, I don't know what's going on. We, we don't, I don't want to speak out of school, I guess, but I think we're going to have some very soon. Um, and with the requirement to find new people, get some, you know, you can no longer, unless we become a triennial training school, um, or federally approved training, you know, CDL training school or truck, truck driving training school, we can't just get an employee and train them to drive and send them to the road test, so they have to go to a driving school. Um, when I, when that rule first changed, it was February sixth of last year, I looked at creating a curriculum and it was daunting, so I said, I'll just wait and see, look for someone with your car or for somebody else after somebody else already has it. Um, that's what we're looking at now, because as soon as we, as soon as we have to get somebody else, we've got to figure out, it's about six grand to send somebody to a driving school, or they have to go to driving school by themselves. And for nineteen dollars an hour or twenty dollars an hour, I, they're not gonna want to spend six grand. They're not gonna want to spend six grand to make it twenty dollars an hour, so. If we can become a driving school, but then still keep it here while they're doing their training and learning their driving, driving trade, and then have an incentive to stay here long enough, and then you'll get that, oh, three bucks an hour is a good jump, it's a good percentage. But you give people to, to, you know, have that incentive and stay and then take that leap. Um, that's, you know, I don't, I don't disagree with the request, um, and I would support the request. I would think, like I said, to me, I would almost advocate for one, two, and three. And then have, and then have, after the third year, jump up to that, um, after they complete the third year. So that would be on your anniversary date, and then you jump up into the next thing, and that's seasonally, that's, uh, June, June to May, is what these charts are.
Every company's actually facing that right now, so minimum wage, people that have raised their minimum wage, hire people for more money, you know, so. A lot of organizations are having equity issues, so.
Yeah.
Step one is get people on the door, then step two is bet, taking care of the people that have been looking for you for a long time. So I go adjustments, makes sense. Yeah, as long as it's a plan for.
Yeah, and I think, Mark, was there an issue budget-wise with these adjustments? I know we looked at them and, I don't want to speak, I speak for you, I think it was within what we do with the budget.
Yeah, I can't, I can't recall the impact that it would have, but it was, it was not incredible.
I believe overall it was about twenty-two. And actually, this would be a wonderful year to do it, since we didn't have much snow on this, so. We, you know, every year we plan, you know, we take those one-hundred lines and we have snow.
Yeah.
We account for X amount of hours of overtime that's kind of built into that, and that's the average. And this year we're well below that, so. I think from a collection standpoint, it's good timing. You know, we're better this year.
Any other board have any question? They're doing a lot of editing over there. Yeah. Checking it out and information.
So do you want to change this to add the third year?
Yeah, this is out of the, out of the...
I guess I'm still a little confused, because you said, well, we'll just take, give rid of four, five, six, seven, and eight on the hire after June one, twenty-nineteen chart. But there, the numbers are still slightly different than the new hires after June one, twenty-twenty-three.
Yeah.
But they're...
Well, this is a twenty, yeah, twenty-three, twenty-four, and this is twenty-four, twenty-five.
Okay.
So that's why there's a difference.
Oh, I see, I see what you're saying, I see what you're saying. So, so the hire after June one, two thousand and nine, these are the twenty-two, twenty-three rates on this chart?
Yes.
Right?
This is twenty-three, twenty-four. This whole page is twenty-three, twenty-four. So, and that's, I just wanted to offer that option, you know, find out what the board thinks about it. You know, it is tough, is two years enough of a time to, you know, two complete years, and then you go up into the next chart and get that, that incentive? Or should we say make it three years? And then something new hire would be here three years and then move up into that chart? Um, I'm thinking about all, to me, personally, all the things you got invested, if you're here a couple of years and then another offer comes up or you're looking at something else, two years is a big investment, but it's not, um, it's not something that's tough to make up before you have...
I'd skip three.
Or three, a little, little deeper in. And so that would just be a minor, you know, I'd just add that one line back on here.
Yeah.
Which is, and it, it should be, I think it's three percent higher than those others. I'm just looking to see if there's something here, they had the same numbers.
The only other thought is, so if the, if the contract goes through twenty-five, twenty-six, why don't you include that one too? Just, you said...
Yeah, I think this was...
You know it's a flat three percent in the, whatever the, the cost of living thing in the contract. Why don't you do a chart, so now you, now you've got the wage rates through the end of the contract.
I think I misspoke, because right here it says page five of five, so this must go through twenty-four, twenty-five. So it must go to June first, uh, twenty-twenty-five, because this is the last...
Is that when the contract expired?
Yeah, it must be.
I said twenty-six.
Yeah, I did, but I was wrong, I mean, here's the first time for everything. Um, but yeah, this is...
All right, as long as it goes through the end of the, the current contract, that's fine.
So what are you asking from us tonight? Nothing, right?
You know, he's gotta change it. And you gotta run it by the union, just to make...
Make sure that, that...
Make sure you're okay with adding the...
And Daryl hasn't seen the show.
And then...
He has, and we, we discussed it, he wanted to discuss it more.
Run it, run it by John, and then you can bring it back to...
Okay.
You know, I haven't had better beer.
So, and I would clarify also, the proposed modifications to the budget don't include any of that equity adjustment. Uh, but, you know, we can always do a budget mod if needed.
Thanks. That's good.
Well, thank you.
Yeah. So, I was starting to announce that the next board meeting is April twenty-seventh. So, I was starting to announce that the next village board meeting is April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three. And hope to see this audience poll again.
You're voting for the budget, then?
So, if anyone has anything else, if not, I would ask for a motion. To adjourn this meeting?
I'll make the motion.
I do.
Oh.
Whoops.
You got to take her.
Said I did.
Wow.
I got in touch with the Public Service Commission about the dual polls all over the place. And really, the Public Service Commission referred me immediately to Frontier. And so a young fellow came over to my house the day before yesterday and he says, so, so what's going on? I told him the whole story about all these double polls all over, not just the village, but all over Monroe County, they're all over. And then he says, you know, that Frontier is owned by a hedge fund company. And if whatever I do every day doesn't bring revenue, then they don't get it all. I said, well, that didn't answer my question. Having done a telephone engineering, I know that maintenance work doesn't, the result of maintenance work is no revenue, it's just maintenance. And so there's piles and piles of these so-called poll proposals that Frontier gets from R G D, as well as the T V company. That are just sitting there, not getting done. And he's, he told me that occasionally you'll see some guys going around taking out the old polls. I said, I haven't yet to see any yet. All the big areas up and down our streets and the buildings are all full of the old polls. It doesn't bother me so much as on the roadside, because they're unsided, and it's a mess all over. And so I have the number for the engineer that took over my position at Frontier. And I'm going to call him in his meetings, call him and see what his, his name is, Mark Todd. I trained him so deeply in, with that, you know.
I, and one thing, I, I contacted with Frontier R G D that I talked to about this fairly good on question, maybe I'm off base. But R G D is allowed to have the polls there because they're in the right of way, and they're allowed to have them there because they're providing electricity. They then grant the right, an attachment fee or attachment rights to some of these other companies. They don't have an inherent right to have them in the right of way, they just tag along the R G Ds. Soon as a new polls placed, the first thing that happens is they transfer the electric over and cut the pole off. So those polls, to my estimation, there's no inherent right for those other polls to be there. Because the only reason those polls could be there is because they provide electric, they carry the electric wires. If they no longer have electric wires attached to them, the polls shouldn't be there. And they can't, and then R G D couldn't grant a right that they no longer possess. They can't say, well, we're still letting telephone company or cable company attach to them, because the polls aren't supposed to be there anymore. They're only allowed to be there because they have electric. I haven't had to refer with that argument yet, but I still think it's...
To take it further, there's a condition that's called L P O, which is last person off takes the poll up. And there's a big deal going on between Frontier and Spectrum or whoever, whoever else on the poll, as to who's going to take it up and who's going to pay for the transfers. And generally, along the road, it's, it's not very hard to do. But you get some of these polls with big intersected, you know, crossovers and all that stuff, it's a lot of work.
Yeah.
And so Spectrum doesn't want to do it, and they don't have the equipment. Frontier does have the equipment, and they don't want to do it. So we kind of run into a brick wall now.
There is an organization, I think it's like NESCA or JESCA or something like that, that I, I, one gentleman told me about. A lot back that does work on facilitating getting those polls removed and things transferred over. And I just have to find a contact again because that was...
I think that there's a lot of that work that's, I, I know for a fact that a lot of that work is contracted out. And, you know, just have to see what's up. I'll talk to Mark. And if I don't get anything from him, I'll go back to the D poll team and file a complaint.
Carl, just put a mask on, one on, get your chainsaw, and take care of business.
A lot of people ask me if they could do that. Nail off the stuff on the poll and go and take the poll down.
What happened? I mean, as for forgiveness later, let's take them down, let's go. We'll put on our pirate costumes.
I know how to do it. I killed a thousand of them when I was a lineman.
I know. You were the guy, so we should do it. All right. These ladies have had a long day. Let's get them home. Kind of motion to adjourn, sorry.
Make the motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. For the audience who didn't get to see this.
That's a dumb gun.
Don's got it, let's hold it.
There you go. I'm saving that for, you can frame the prosperity.